I guess we can start. Do we have anyone from Ward one? I don't see Ward one. I do see Richard.
I'm here, Mayor.
Okay, let me see. Let me put the people in here. Okay. All righty, Yolanda, well, we will start this council meeting. I really appreciate the one item on the agenda. So we will commence a special council meeting to, in terms of elections and canvas of the returns and declaration of results of the general and special elections held November 7th, 2023. For the record, we are conducting this special council meeting virtually. So all of us are virtual and all of us are present. Yolanda, do you have to read anything into the record?
No, unless you want me to do roll call, but everybody is present.
That would be excellent.
Okay. Mick Santa Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham. He's on mute, but I see him.
He looks frozen.
He looks frozen, maybe. Okay, Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimpriz. Mr. Kozaczek.
Here.
And Mayor Romero.
Here. Can someone please check with Paul? I know that he was with us, but it looks like he's a little on the frozen side. So, Yolanda, can you have someone text him to make sure that he's? Well, there he is.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Well, I just wanted to open up because I know that we have a presentation by Mr. Rankin. I just wanted to thank you all for coming together today to consider canvassing of the November 7th, 2023 election. For the record, the security, safety and fairness of our election system is of utmost importance to me, and I can easily say all of us. We have seen the challenges brought forward in most cases without substance by election deniers or people who wish to call our election system into question. I am absolutely confident that the ballots counted for elected positions, bonds and propositions by Pima County Elections Department are accurate. The vote tally that Pima County provided to us, I feel secure about, and I'm open to considering action tonight to make sure the voters in Tucson are 100% without doubt sure as well. We have an opportunity tonight to reinforce confidence in our election systems. Here in Pima County, the canvas of the November 2023 election was passed four to one by the Pima County Board of Supervisors earlier today. I'm looking forward to the explanation of the city attorney and wish to take action to make sure that the voters are confident that the election conducted by Pima County Elections was accurate and fair. So I know that Mr. Rankin has a presentation for us as well as we will be able to discuss and take action on canvassing this election. But I wanted to, before we start any type of discussion, have Mr. Rankin explain what we're doing today and give a presentation on what we need to act on today.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that introduction, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I did, I provided the PowerPoint to the clerk's office. I'm not sure that they have it handy to pull up, but if so, now would be the time. And then I'll walk through it. So thank you all. Just as a quick introduction, I'm going to talk about the canvas, which is the item on the agenda that I'm going to be asking that you approve the resolution and adopt the resolution, which will approve the canvas of the election, of all the races in the election. I will be talking in particular about Proposition 413, of course, because of the recount issues, which have caused a lot of questions over the last several days. So next slide. So a quick note about Proposition 413, so that everybody remembers how it got to the ballot and why. Proposition 413, of course, was referred to the city's voters as a requirement of the Tucson Charter. Back in 1993, the city's voters approved Proposition 100, and it established a procedure in our charter itself that calls for an independent commission to get together every couple of years and make recommendations with respect to the salaries of our local elected officials, the mayor and council. That charter provision specifically provides that if that committee, commission recommends an adjustment to mayor and council salaries, then it gets referred to the voters by the mayor and council. That's not a discretionary act by the mayor and council. It's not a proposal that the mayor and council puts in front of the voters. It's a proposal that this independent commission puts in front of the voters. The mayor and council, of course, followed that procedure, referred Proposition 413 to the ballot, and it was called and administered as a special election held concurrently with the regularly scheduled regular election. So next slide. So what's on the agenda tonight? Tonight's agenda is the canvas, the approval of the voting totals for the election and all the races within it, including the special election relating to Proposition 413. As you've all heard, the vote margin with respect to Proposition 413 was very small. I think we ended up with a 289 vote difference with yes more, 289 more yes votes than no votes out of something like 94,000 votes cast. So obviously, a very slim margin. And specifically, that's a margin that is less than one half of 1% of the total number of votes cast. And that's a significant fact because that calls into question the application of the state statutes relating to when a recount is required under state law. So the question then became, does this require a recount of the Proposition 413 vote totals under Arizona law? So next slide. So before we go too far into that, my first point and request that the mayor and council, of the mayor and council tonight, is that you complete the canvas and you adopt the resolution that approves the canvas. There is no reason at this time to delay the approval of the canvas. In fact, approval of the canvas is required by state law. The state statute section is there, ARS 16-642, and it's required to occur within a certain timeframe, which is not more than 20 days after the election, absent extraordinary circumstances. It's also required by our charter. The canvas as presented and prepared by the city clerk certifies the official vote totals in all of the races in the election. One quick note, any issue of a recount or subsequent election contest doesn't move forward until we canvass. So Pima County has now canvassed the election, and it's on our agenda to do the same tonight, and there's no reason not to approve the resolution approving the canvas. So what about a recount, right? It's a very slight margin with respect to Proposition 413. So I want to walk through the basic provisions of Arizona law relating to a recount of elections. First of all, the proceedings for a recount of votes in any election are strictly statutory, okay? And that's really important because Arizona case law has been clear for 50 years, and I cite one of the 1977 case that walks through this. It's been clear under Arizona law for all that time that recounts can only occur when they are expressly statutorily authorized or statutorily required. They're not a discretionary decision of a local jurisdiction to say, hey, let's recount this election, or let's not recount that election. It's all governed by statute, and Arizona case law makes that very clear. And in fact, if anyone goes to court to request a recount, the state law provides expressly that the burden of securing an order from a court ordering a recount is on the person seeking a judicially ordered recount. And when the court is faced with that question, the court cannot order a recount unless the court can identify express statutory authority to do so. And the next point I put in bold, because I think there's been some reporting or maybe even statements by some other officials of other jurisdictions that, you know, the mayor and council should just be ordering a recount. Well, you can't. That would be an illegal act. And in fact, only a court under the statutes I'm about to walk through can order a recount, and the court can only do that if certain specific circumstances and facts are present and that match up with the criteria that's provided under the statute. So it isn't a question of mayor and council saying, okay, this one was pretty close, let's have a recount, or for any other reason. And if you think about it for a moment, the reasoning behind that structure in Arizona law is pretty easy to figure out, because otherwise, quite frankly, there'd be bedlam. You know, individual cities, towns, counties making up their own rules for when votes are counted, when votes are recounted, or maybe when a hand count might be done. The law doesn't allow for that kind of variation from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. So these election laws are very rigorously applied and evenly applied to all jurisdictions. So next slide. So the Arizona recount statutes, they are found in Title 16. Specifically, they are 1661 through 667. And historically, all the way up until 2004, those recount provisions relating to close races and under the Arizona law only applied to state and county elections and didn't apply to municipal elections, including municipal elections between candidates for an elected office. In fact, it wasn't until 2004 that the legislature, by adopting the Senate bill that's identified here in the slide, added in a provision to make it so that the recount provisions did in fact apply to municipal candidate elections. But when the legislature amended the statute, they only added in candidate elections at the city level. In other words, elections for a city office or a town office, a mayor, a council member, et cetera. But the amendment by the legislature did not add in other types of municipal elections, non-candidate elections, propositions, ballot measures not involving a candidate. Another amendment, of course, was last year's amendment. And at that time, the legislature changed what the trigger was. It used to be under very narrow circumstances that certain races were subject to a recount. But the legislature last year standardized the measurement that would trigger a recount for the races that are subject to the statute. And it's described here in the slide. So if the difference between the yes vote and the no vote is less than one half of 1%, then it triggers the provisions of the Arizona recount statute for the races to which it applies. Okay, next slide. So, under that standard and under those statutes, the question became, is Proposition 413 subject to those state statutes and subject to an automatic recount? And as I say here on the slide, my opinion is no. And I want to take just a second to say that the first two words on that slide, my opinion, are really important here because, so as the city attorney, I have certain duties and responsibilities in holding this office. And one of those duties and responsibilities is to provide legal advice to the various city officials, including the city clerk, in conducting elections. And so as this issue of Prop 413 started to come to a head, and it was clear that it was going to be a narrow margin, either yes or no, the question of whether it would be subject to the automatic recount came forward, and I had an obligation to provide my legal advice to the city clerk about what would be the next steps if it in fact fell within that half of 1% margin. And I'll be honest with you, going into it, I was thinking, well, yeah, I know the legislature changed the standard and that it's this much narrower number that triggers recounts. But as we started going through the statute, we realized that the recounts provisions in the Arizona statutes don't contemplate in any way the recount of a local, a city, non-candidate election, a proposition like Proposition 413. In fact, as I described with respect to the 2004 amendment to the statutes that the legislature adopted, the only reference to municipal elections that is in the recount statutes is for candidate elections, elections for mayor, elections for council members. In turn, the only references in the recount statutes to non-candidate elections, like initiatives, referendum, referred measures, et cetera, only apply to statewide propositions. And of course, Proposition 413 is not a statewide proposition. Instead, it's a city proposition that does not involve the election of candidates. And as you go through the statutes, you see that in the context of referred measures, non-candidate elections, all of the provisions in the statute refer exclusively to actions that must be taken by state officials, the Secretary of State, the governor, the Maricopa County Superior Court, and not city officials. So it became very clear that those provisions are only with respect to statewide matters, not citywide matters like Proposition 413. Next slide. So the question keeps coming up where it says, where people have come forward and media has inquired and said, but, but the statute says referred measures. It says referred measures are subject to recount. So doesn't that include Proposition 413 because it was referred to the voters? And again, my answer is no, because that reference can necessarily only refer to statewide measures. And why? Because the recount process under the statutes is, it goes like this. It says that if a recount is required for a referred measure or an initiative or an amendment to the Arizona Constitution, which of course is a statewide matter, then the process starts with the Secretary of State, not the city clerk, certifying that a recount is required. The Secretary of State is then required to go off to Maricopa County Superior Court, specifically Maricopa County Superior Court, not the county in which the election was held, but Maricopa County. And the Maricopa County Superior Court then oversees the recount, directs the Secretary of State to conduct the recount. And once the recount is complete, Maricopa County Superior Court is to order the governor of the state of Arizona to proclaim the result of the election that was subject to that recount, not the mayor, not the city clerk, not the mayor and council, but the governor. It became very clear that this system was set up for statewide measures, not a local proposition, because fundamentally, it makes no sense at all to have a recount of a city election administered by the Secretary of State, the governor, and Maricopa County Superior Court. An interesting little additional point is it also provides that in those types of recounts, it's the state of Arizona and not the city in which the election was held that's responsible for all the costs of the recount. I think it's fair to say that that's a pretty clear indication that we're only talking about statewide measures here rather than city or town measures. So next slide. So here's what I'm recommending that you do at this point and asking this specific action from the mayor and council. First, please approve the canvas. Adopt the resolution 23697 that approves the canvas. We're required to do it by state law and by our own charter. Pima County took action today, and so now we're in a position to do the same. I would then suggest that by separate motion, that the mayor and council confirm and certify that the vote margin relating to Prop 413 is the margin as reflected in the canvas, and that is in fact, less than one half of 1% of the number of votes cast for that measure. The additional part of the motion I would ask for in direction is to authorize the city clerk and myself to notify the Secretary of State and the Attorney General of the canvas of Proposition 413 and the difference, the narrow difference in the vote margin. And the purpose of that is because if in fact it were to be determined by a court that, you know what, a recount is required, the statute requires the actions to be taken by the Secretary of State, not by the city clerk, and by the governor and by Maricopa County Superior Court. So I believe that I have an obligation to notify them of this issue with respect to 413. But I'll also notify them of my legal position that the recount provisions in the state law simply do not apply. But that'll give the Secretary of State with the assistance of the Attorney General an opportunity to weigh in on it as well in terms of whether the Attorney General might disagree with this opinion or might think that further steps need to be taken with respect to a recount. And secondly, I would ask that as part of that authorization, that you authorize me to file a legal action as appropriate and necessary to ask the court to confirm this position. In other words, go to court to say, hey, Superior Court, we would like you to either confirm that the recount provisions of Title 16 don't apply for the reasons that the city attorney has stated, or if you disagree with that, then order the recount. We're happy to do a recount, but what we can't do is a recount that isn't authorized by Arizona law, because that would be violating Arizona law. And I can't put the mayor and council or the city in the position of violating state law. So that's the sum total of my presentation. And Honorable Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to answer questions about it.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your presentation, Mr. Rankin, as well as your recommendation and providing the explanation in terms of our state laws that prohibit any recounts at the whim of the, any of the jurisdictions in Arizona. That's in a form protecting the integrity of our elections here in Arizona. So I really appreciate the recommendation, and I'd like my colleagues to please provide a motion.
Mayor, I would like to move that we approve the canvas. Adopt resolution 23697.
Second.
So there is a motion in a few seconds, and that particular motion, Mr. Rankin, is to approve the canvas in adopting resolution 23697, and then also including the additional recommendation that you've requested?
Mayor, you can do it that way, or there can be a subsequent motion giving that. Mayor, you can do it that way, or there can be a subsequent motion giving that, uh, additional, um, direction.
Okay.
Either way.
So, uh, Councilwoman Lee, did you include both adopting resolution two, three, six, nine, seven, and then to give direction on the recommended motion by the city attorney?
Yes, let me go ahead and tag that on to the second part then, um. Mr. Rankin, I don't know if we need to read the whole thing, but confirm and certify that the vote margin relating to Prop four thirteen is by the number established in the canvas, which is less than one half of 1% of the number of votes cast for that measure, and direct and authorize the city clerk and city attorney to notify the secretary of state and Arizona attorney general of the Prop four thirteen result in canvas and to, uh, file a legal action requesting the courts to either, uh, one recount by conducted, uh, based on the Prop four thirteen canvas or recount provisions of Arizona statute, um, do not apply. So that's the full thing.
Okay, so that is a motion and a second. And now we move to further discussion and have a few hands up. Uh, Councilmember Cunningham.
Mine is really simple. In 2017, we passed, uh, proposition two oh three. And it, it came in at almost exactly point five. It can be argued it was a little bit below. Did we have any recount, request a recount? Was there any discussion of a recount? I can't remember. I know it was really close. I think this was the Parks Bond. But I just remember 2003, 2017, Prop two oh three was really, really close. I, I think it was a matter of, you know, six hundred and about thirty-three votes or something. So I just want to know if we had a, was that, were we gonna apply that recount statute then, or did it even come up?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, uh, it never got that far because, uh, that predated the change, the most recent change in the statute. The measurement for, uh, a recount, um, now being this half, less than half of 1% uh, only came into being last year. Uh, back in 2017, uh, the, the, the measure was much narrower. Uh, and so the, the vote different differential with respect to that proposition, uh, didn't even get to the point of deciding whether it would trigger a recount or not.
So this, this triggers my next question. Have we ever gone to recount because of the state statute in any circumstance? Because I don't want to reverse what we've done in the past. That's all I'm asking.
Honorable mayor, councilmember Cunningham, not that I can remember. Um, and I know that we had some councilmember, uh, races that were, were pretty close. Um, but before the change in the, the statute last year, um, a councilmember race was only subject to a recount, um, if the margin was, uh, less than ten votes. Um, and we never, we never had something, uh, that narrow. Um, I, I, I would like to make one, uh, point out one thing in researching the legislative history of the recount statutes to see what other jurisdictions might have done. That change that the legislature made in 2004, where for the first time they added in city elections and only city candidate elections, that was done, as it often is the case, in reaction to a real life scenario that had played out in 2003. And that was a race in an Arizona town in, within Maricopa County, where the race for council was decided by a total of two votes. And, uh, that town said, hey, Maricopa County, we need to do a recount because of the recount statute. And Maricopa County election officials looked at the recount, uh, statute and said, it doesn't apply to city or town elections. And so that's why the legislature in 2004 amended, um, the, uh, statute to say, oh, we're gonna add in, uh, city or town elections of, between candidates. But, but they didn't add in city or town elections relating to non-candidate measures propositions. So that's a very long answer to your question of, have we ever done a recount before? And, um, uh, not, not while I've been here, we, we have not.
Look, I appreciate it. I just want to be sure that all of our bases are covered, that we're doing everything we can, and I think we are. I think it's a well-prepared motion. I think, I think it, I, I applaud the, uh, comprehensiveness in which you prepared us for this situation. The canvas takes us to the next step to a recount, one, one way or the other. So I totally agree with that. And I think again, going to the court and going, hey, do you need us to do recount here? Because we're happy to do it is the best way to go. Uh, the last thing I want to do is be a part of an illegal recount. So I, I think we're, I think all of our bases are covered, and I think the intent of the council is very clear here.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. And I just wanted to add on, on the motion, um, a couple of things come to mind. One, that I absolutely have faith, uh, and belief that the Pima County Elections Department is safe and secure and accurate. And so I believe that their work has been done and done professionally. And, um, you know, uh, they've, they've done a good job with all of the initiatives and the candidates. So, uh, we can't forget that, that the count from the Pima County Elections Department has been submitted for mayor and my three colleagues that were running, as well as, uh, school bonds and overrides and proposition four thirteen. So, um, you know, I, I am concerned that some will use this particular, um, margin of when, the 289 votes, as something of a, um, excuse to deny the election. And so two things, one, that I have full faith in the Pima County Elections Department. Uh, and either way, right, either way, however mayor and council feels, I stand by the 289 votes and I stand, um, for if the court decides, uh, that they say, you know what, let's do a recount. Then I stand behind the number staying at or plus minus a few votes, uh, difference. Uh, so either way, it, I want to make sure that our election system in Pima County, um, has the full faith of the community as well as mine and my colleagues on the council. And, uh, there shouldn't be any doubt in anyone's mind that what we have in front of us is accurate. Uh, so I feel comfortable either way. My colleagues, uh, council member, uh, councilwoman Lee has her hand up, and then we'll go, uh, with Vice Mayor. I don't see any other hands up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you to the city attorney, uh, Mike. I know yesterday when I reached out to you, I was having a lot of the same reaction that a lot of folks were having.
He froze.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if it's just me or if we lost Nikki.
I thought so too. I thought it was me.
Dude, I thought it was me.
Okay.
She's probably trying to get back in.
Yeah.
All righty.
Do you want me to go or do you want me to go or you want to wait for her?
Oh, she's coming back. Let me see, hold on. She's just texted me.
Okay.
Teams died. Um, she's coming back in a second. Uh, go ahead, Vice Mayor, and then we'll, and then we'll come back to Councilman Lee.
Okay. Mike, I have a, first of all, question about the statute, and then I've got a couple of comments. Wait, is Nikki back?
I am.
Yeah, I was about to say wait.
So it's been so long since we've had a teams technological challenge.
Right.
Having COVID day flashbacks. I'm sorry about that. I'm on my phone now and not on my, uh, screen here. Uh, no, Mayor, I was just saying that I really appreciate Mr. Rankin, um, helping to educate us on this issue. It's quite complexed and very nuanced, and I appreciate that. And as you alluded to, Mayor, I feel the same way. I just want to, um, project that we are making the decision that will continue building trust with the community, um, allowing the courts to make the decision in this kind of uncharted territory and fully supportive of allowing the courts to decide and just signaling our commitment to and, um, and belief in our election system and election integrity. So I just wanted to throw that in the mix. And, um, thank you to the city attorney and his team for helping to navigate this, um, issue.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Mike, first a question about the statute. You, you referenced, uh, era, section sixteen. In four oh three, it says the city or town elections and under the section duties of officers. In the city or town elections, the duties devolving on the secretary of state in other elections shall devolve on the mayor. So how do we reconcile that with going to Maricopa County for this?
Yeah, thanks, uh, for asking that question. That's something we've rooted through as well as we've gone through all this. Um, and it's, yeah, sixteen four oh three allows for, um, and recognizes that certain, uh, sections of the Arizona statutes talk exclusively about the secretary of state. And then that can cause issues when you're talking about a local election, uh, versus a statewide election. And so what sixteen four oh three does is it says, hey, when a statute's talking about us, uh, the secretary of state having certain duties and responsibilities, but the issue in question is, is, has to do with a local election, then no duties devolve either to the mayor or the equivalent officer. Usually it actually devolves to the city clerk, uh, translates to the secretary of state. The, the issue here though is that the recount statutes talk about both the secretary of state and the city clerks, okay? And so you can't apply sixteen four oh three to say, okay, everywhere it says secretary of state, substitute in city clerk or mayor, because the statutes themselves distinguish between when the duty falls to the city clerk, when the duty falls to, um, uh, the secretary of state. So it wouldn't make sense to then use that statute as a, a way of changing how that statute reads. I will also add that that statute only relates to where a statute says secretary of state. It doesn't create any mechanism to change Maricopa County to a different county or the governor to a different official. Um, and so that's, it just highlights the fact that this overall statutory structure for recounts is, is really only contemplates, uh, statewide elections.
Okay, fair. So, so let me, first of all, let me say two things. I believe Mike's right. And number two, if the state legislature needs to go back and amend SV twelve forty-four, they'll do that next term if they don't like what, what they did. But that doesn't mean they get to say, oh, what, we meant this. Last night I participated in an event with the Arizona Democracy Resilience Network. It's a group put together by both Ron Barber and Don Henninger from, from Phoenix. Um, there, it's about fair elections, and they have five principles. One is to assure an honest process, and I agree with the mayor that the, uh, the vote count is, is right. It's within five or 10 votes probably either way. It's not within 300 votes either way. Secondly, that the campaigns be civil. Thirdly, secure voting is a, is assured, fair oversight. And the final one is trusted outcomes. So we're, we're living in a time right now where elections all over the country are under a new level of scrutiny. And I think that we should do everything in our power to assure that, um, that there's no doubting the sanctity of the four thirteen results. We all know a recount's not gonna flip this election. But, uh, Rankin, Mike Rankin has issued an opinion. And, um, the, by petitioning for a recount or whatever the legal words of art are, the court will either validate that opinion and, uh, and say you don't have standing to be here and, and send, send us home and happy with the raise and move on in life. Or the court will say that the, the interpretation is too narrow and to go do a recount, in which case we'll be happy to do a recount. But I think this is absolutely the right, the right decision to make to, to let the court break the tie. And, and we'll move, we'll live with the result of that. So I appreciate the, the, uh, study that you've done on this, Mike and others, and, uh, happy to support the motion.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other, uh, council colleagues? Okay, I do not see any others that want to comment. Um, I have a couple of questions just so that we, uh, go to the vote. How long, what's the timeline for this process to move forward, Mike? And then indeed, who pays for the recount?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, so my intent will be to get a letter to the secretary of state with a copy to the attorney general tomorrow. And, uh, I suspect that they may want a little bit of time to chew through this, um, before next steps. If then, uh, based on that interaction, we, uh, make a decision that we need to file this action in, uh, in superior court, um, then I would expect we would do that the following week. But I do want to just build in some time for, uh, a true discussion between us and the attorney general and the secretary of state because of their role in this statutory structure. So I don't want to bind them to a particular timeline, um, but we would move quickly. Um, uh, I can, I can assure you of that. As I mentioned, I, I hope during, uh, the, the presentation that I went through, one of the interesting things about the statute and one of the components of it that I think makes it clear that this type of recount is contemplated only for a statewide measure is that it expressly provides that the cost of that recount would be a charge to the state rather than to the city or the county in which the election occurred. So we've got that.
Okay, well, you know, it's, 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 um, it is an extra layer of protection and, um, to be able to, uh, make sure that the public feels comfortable with it. Um, I, like I said before, am absolutely confident that the Pima County Elections Office, uh, did a safe, secure, and accurate job. Um, but you know, because there is misinformation out there, there's, um, extra scrutiny out there. Uh, there's no point in not getting a second opinion to your opinion and, uh, moving forward with whatever a possible, uh, court can decide for us. I do want to make sure that we move this as quickly as we possibly can, uh, so that there is, um, so that there is an, a result for the community as quickly as possible.
Well, dear Mayor. One last thing, Mayor, is I want to make sure I mentioned that I will make the presentation available through the clerk's office to, to everyone here. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll get that out, uh, during the meeting or shortly thereafter.
Perfect. All righty. Well, thank you so much. Do we need a roll call for this? Yolanda?
Yes, Mayor, but before that, can I read the resolution into the record?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Resolution number two, three, six, nine, seven, relating to elections, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election for the offices of mayor and councilmembers from wards one, two, and four, and of the special election for proposition four thirteen held in the city of Tucson, Arizona on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. So Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fimerez?
Aye.
Mr. Kusaczek?
Aye.
Mick Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
And Mayor Romero?
Aye. Motion passes by vote of seven, zero. Any other, um, items on the agenda?
No, next is adjournment.
All righty, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, Mr. Rankin, for your guidance in this and looking forward to, uh, speedy response, uh, to both mayor and council and the community.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.